We're live, your worship.
Great, thank you, Ms. Rousseau. All right, council. I'd like to call this committee of the whole meeting for February 10th, 2022 to order with adoption of the agenda. And I want to amend the agenda so that the agendas be adopted as amended to switch the order of 9A and 9B for the benefit of community economic development and to include an in-camera agenda pursuant to Section 90.1E of the Local Government Act. So if someone want to make that motion for me, please. Counselor Palmer, Counselor Charlet, all in favor? Motion's carried. Adoption of the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting for January 13th. Someone make that motion for me. Counselor Charlet, second by Counselor Brothel, all in favor? Motion's carried. Any business arising from those minutes? Seamus, I'm going to go right on to, oh, pardon me, Counselor Elliot.
It's not, I guess it's the meeting before that. We had a discussion from the social group that were looking for $80,000 for funding from the economic initiative or grant that we received. And I'm just curious, at that meeting, it was sent to them, let's go back.
Sir?
Hey, it was, it was identified as a, they petitioned for $80,000 at that time to run through their operations. I have a couple of questions on, when did the municipality become this source of funding for, for, for social support? Is that, is that normal or is this just a direction we're now going?
Any comment on that, Ms. McCabe?
Sorry, your worship. What was the question?
A meeting or two ago, $80,000 was designated to go to something to do with.
Oh.
Sector. Do you want to weigh in on that? Is that something that will always go through city now with regards to funding? That was Counselor Elliot's question. Is that correct, Counselor Elliot?
Well, I think social care is under provincial jurisdiction rather than municipality. So, so creating a precedent where we're just, the social groups come to city council for funding doesn't seem to be widely accepted.
So any comment, Ms. McCabe, regarding that?
To your worship, I believe that what Counselor Elliot may be referring to is that when we had the Finance Committee meeting in November, there was some discussion about allocating $80,000 out of the restart funds to the, for this, to do with the policy that was discussed at the last council meeting on Tuesday. And now that, is that correct?
Yeah, it was my misunderstanding. I thought it was the Committee of the Whole rather than the Finance Committee, but yes.
Yeah, you're right. It was, it was at the Finance Committee in November. And so those minutes will be coming up on the next council agenda. However, in that interim, council approved $200,000 instead. So we're not going to be bringing forward the recommendation for 80 because council approved 200. Does that make sense?
Well, that's, that's what I'm getting at. We're, we're allocating money at municipal level that should be coming from the provincial level. And whether it's from the 80,000, well, you know, we had a pool of funds. At the time, we said to the Social Committee, say, go, we have $600,000 left of, of the recovery money. Go back and, and come back with a bigger scheme, a bigger plan, a bigger, bigger idea. And so what they did, they came back with a bigger ask for funding to support the daily operations. They went from 80 to 200 because we just need to survive. And I'm saying, well, that survival fund or survival money is not usually the jurisdiction of municipalities.
And that's, that's restart funds? That's a separate issue than what we normally do? But we'll bring that up and discuss that further at the Finance Committee because it came out of those meetings.
Yeah, and I just, I just want to make sure that the social sector realizes that this, this coming to council for funding is not normal.
Oh, I think they're well aware. Anyway, we'll discuss that again. Thanks. All right, any discussion from regarding the, the last committee of the whole meeting minutes? Okay, we're going to carry on and we're going to go right into delegations and presentations. We have Kathy English here today with the Revelstoke Museum and Archives. So Kathy, you're going to do your annual report and we're going to tell you we've got, we've got 10 minutes for you, 10.2 minutes.
Okay, I'll zip through it.
All right, thank you.
So there is a fairly lengthy report, but I'll try to zip through it fairly quickly.
Thank you.
This was a report that we presented at our annual general meeting held on January 19th. So we can move to the next slide, please. So again, just as everybody else experienced, we were very much influenced by the pandemic. And our activities, visitor numbers and income were challenged again. But we think that we came through fairly well and we're happy with, with where we're at right now. And the, our annual financial statement that you received will reflect those numbers. One of the things that I will mention here is that one of the projects we're working on is collecting material from the community about COVID-19. So we'll be, we'll be doing some interviews. We're going to encourage people to write out, you know, their own personal journeys through the pandemic, just to make sure that that, that's included in our, our record as we go through and preserved in the archives for future generations for, God forbid, the next pandemic. So we can go to the next slide. So we did have some staff changes. Holly Rosenberg left her position as office manager. And we're now sharing a position between two very skilled people, Maria Somerville and Laura Van Zant. Maria Somerville is well-known and born, the real local, born in Revelstoke. And really can, really interested in local history, has some really solid skills in the bookkeeper and in the banking. Working in, in banking in the community. And Laura is also part-time curator at the Railway Museum. So she brings a lot of the museum skill. So it's a really strong team. So we can go into the next slide then. Our attendance was down even from 20, from, from 2020. But we're hoping that that'll pick up this year. Of course, our busiest month was July, once the restrictions were off. And April, of course, when restrictions were on. So we was when our, we had the least visitors. But we're hoping that's really going to turn around this year. We can move on again. Our gift shop is just doing fantastic. We just, we had really good profit from the, from the year. Sales exceeded last year and even the previous year. So people, even though there weren't as many people in, they were buying and they were buying local. So that was really good to see that. And we appreciate all those who support the museum through our purchases. We have a lot of consignment, so we provide a venue for a lot of local artists and artisans. Next slide, please. We have a great, great volunteers. We had about 30 volunteers who provided 675 hours of work. Especially the Heritage Garden. We had, we even have a former counselor, Bill McFarland, on our garden committee. So that, but all of the gardeners just do a super job and they just got lots of compliments from people who enjoy that beautiful downtown green space. I also have a volunteer who does some carpentry and design installation for me. And a couple of volunteers who are researching through the tax city rolls to prepare history profiles on most of the heritage homes in town. So just some great work being done by our great volunteers. Next slide. And we've got some, couple of new small exhibits. We've just got our, we have a intern working here and she was just working on a little exhibit on Revelstoke during World War II. So we're continuing to refresh that little case every six months. We can move on, please. And an interesting exhibit called The Story of Two Drowned Deer, which is from the Souls family. The deer were drowned in the river channel between Arrowhead and Beaton sometime in the 1920s. And their deer were retrieved and mounted and they were donated this year. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see the photograph of the, the deer and the panel that we had. And we had a photograph of the, the actual boat with Captain Souls on the boat. So we're created a little panel on that one. We can go onto the next slide, please. Did a little exhibit in our parlor, just enhancing that space and talking about women's history. And we're continuing to work on that one. We can move on now. That's just showing what that looks like. We added a little bit of wallpaper in there to, yeah, it's now, jazz it up a little bit. Next slide, please. And a couple of upgrades to our industry exhibit area and some new panels. We're continuing to add a few new panels all the time and just keep things fresh. We can move on, please. I've been doing presentations at Mount Carshia Court. We do them, but I've done them Zoom when necessary and in person when we're able to. So we'll, next slide, please. We had fewer school visits for obvious reasons, but we were able to do some Zoom visits as well. And now we're back to, to doing onsite visits. And the kids love coming in here and we love having them where we keep developing new programs all the time. I work closely with the teachers to make sure we align with their curriculum. Next slide, please. Walking tours were down, obviously, you know, both with the, the, the heat and the wildfires and the pandemic. But we are still continuing those and hopefully that'll pick up this year. And next slide, please. And brown bag history, realized that this year is our 19th year of brown bags. So we might have to do something to celebrate our 20th anniversary next year. I've done over 340 talks in that time. We now all, I also do, we have small audiences coming. But we also put them on, do them on Zoom as well. And then I put them on our YouTube channel. And we have a lot of people who are viewing that, those talks. I just looked at our stats. I did a talk in December on the Farwell Police War, which was this really interesting incident in 1885 where the Northwest Mounted Police and the Provincial Police were arresting each other. And last time I looked, there was over 460 views of that one, that one video. Next, please.
Kathy, I just started briefly, Counselor Elliot has a question.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. Just maybe what, what is the brown bag standard? Is this lunch hour talks or?
Yeah, yeah, that's, we, we called it brown bag history. I'll admit that I might have stolen the idea from another museum, but it was, the idea was lunch hour lectures. So you get, rather than doing evening lecture, you get sort of the lunch hour, you know, people who are looking for something interesting to do during their lunch hour. And we encourage people to, they're welcome to bring their lunch, hence the brown bag. So that's kind of, we've kind of used that as our branding. The two books that I've written are based on the talks are called Brown Bag History.
And you do them in the museum or do you do them various places?
We've done almost all of them in the museum. I've done a few other places. Years ago, I did one at the Fire Hall on Fire History. I've done some at the golf course, but most of them are here in the museum. Pre-pandemic, we were getting up to 40, 45 people for the talks. And now we're keeping the audiences low, but we're hoping that we can get back to our, to our, our bigger audiences. Because it, people do enjoy them in person. But we will continue, even when we get back to full audiences, we'll continue to record them and put them on our YouTube. It just gets a broader audience.
No, just, there's a business there. I mean, I'm sure you could rotate various different cafes. Would, would love to supply brown bags for you and take, come in for, come in for lunch and a talk. So I'm sure there's a business model there that might work, but just an idea.
That, that is a good idea. We'd definitely be open to doing that. So that's something we can look at once things open up even more.
Yep.
So just moving on, we didn't do a lot of events, but I do have to again thank his worship mayor, Solz, for attending my 65th birthday party in July. It was a really lovely event and everybody said, happy 65th, you're not allowed to retire. So. Anyway, we can move on to the next slide, please. We updated our website in 2020 and we're really happy with that. And then this year with a grant from Launch Online, we were able to add an online store and we're making sales on that. Some of the most popular items are our books and our, our heritage prints and posters. So we're hoping that that will, that will continue to be another source of income for us. We can move on, please. Where we finished our, our film project washed away last year. This was a work that we did with a Gatt Bernard and it's really a stunning little film, 20-minute film. And we haven't been able to screen it yet, but we're hoping to do that this year and make it a really big event and really bring that history to life. Next slide, please. Again, we had some great summer students. This year we were able to hire some local students. Jamie Reynolds and Alexis Welch, they were great. We ran a smaller version of our Heritage Explorers Children's Program. And then we're hoping to expand it again this year, get back to at least a few more sessions than we were able to do this year. Next slide, please. And then we've been able to hire an intern two years in a row now through Young Canada Works. And we've got a young woman from Calgary who's just doing some great work for us. Really happy to have her here. She's unfortunately going to be finished by the middle of March. And I would love to find a way to keep her, but hopefully she'll be able to continue her career in the museum field. We can move on, please. This was one of the artifacts that, that she cataloged, this beautiful coffee service that was donated by the Nelson family this past year. It was won by Nels Nelson at Leavenworth, Washington in 1930. We've added that to our display. And next, please. Land of Thundering Snow, we created a traveling version of that. It's currently in Fernie Museum and then it's going way up north to Stuart, B.C. And then we're working on a plan for upcoming rentals. And we receive $3,000 as a rental fee for each rental of that exhibit. The great team that put that together. Next, please. Well, this is just a photograph before we sent the exhibit off to Whistler last year. So it's just taking some of the, the material from our exhibit. Stories Beneath the Surface, we, that's our exhibit that we have in place about the communities that were impacted by the Huquini Side Dam. And we're working on a virtual version of that through the Virtual Museum of Canada. And all things going well, that should open this year. Next, please. And we've been adding some of our material to the BC Regional Digitized History Project, which is funded through UBC Okanagan. And we've got close to 1,000 of our photographs on there and hope to continue with that as well. Next, please. And getting a lot of work done in our archives. We've added over 2,000 photos to our museum database, including photographs that were taken by George Stocks in the 1940s and quite a few others. And the added material from the BC Winter Games Committee and Lions Club and, and a lot of other donors as well. Next, please. So our big project that we're working towards in the next little while is looking to see if we can get more accessibility in the museum. And we're looking at that from a broad perspective to how to make the museum barrier-free, including people with, for people with sensory hearing and sight issues. And we're looking at following up a list of recommendations. Next slide, please. And of course, the big thing, our big challenge in terms of accessibility is the lack of a lift to the second floor. And so we're, we're working on that one and we're happy to get support and principle from the city of Revelstoke. We thank you for giving us that support to move forward with this project and we'll keep you informed of our, of our process. Next, please. We're working with Rob and with Lori Donato to redo the River Trail panels. If you've walked that trail, you might have noticed that some of the panels are looking quite worn. So those will be replaced and then we're adding a few panels as well, including the Courthouse and Farwell Park and Queen Elizabeth Park and a couple of other locations as well. And those will be up this spring. Next, please. These are our current officers. We had three new people join our board this year, Jamie Hobgood from Revelstoke Credit Union, Olivia LaRose and Shannon Brosa. And that's actually, I think, taking our average age down a fair bit and bringing some, some new ideas to the board. So we're, we're happy to, to welcome that. We've got such a great, strong board. They give us really good, strong financial backing and oversight and, and direction, really. I'm, I'm so happy with their board and so pleased to be able to, to work with them. Next slide, please. And so just to end by thanking all of our, our board members and our, our association members and our volunteers and all of the staff here. And our ongoing thanks to the city of Revelstoke for their care of this beautiful heritage building that we're in and their support of, of our programs and all that we do. So I thank you again for, for letting me make this presentation to you this afternoon.
Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate it. Ms. Rousseau, if you could stop sharing the screen and then we can see Kathy just a little bigger. There we, there we go. Kathy, I want to thank you again for all that you do for our community. For me, it's emotional to see all the things that come forward and extremely excited to hear about some of George Stocks photographs being added to, to the roster over there. And having known him over the years and there's, there's a few of us who are still around who remember Mr. and Mrs. Stocks. And seeing some of the, some of that stuff come to the museum is absolutely awesome. So thanks for that. Counsel, any comments or questions that you have for, for Kathy? Counselor Elliot?
Kathy, preliminary issues on the, on the cost of the lift. Do you have any ballpark, what it might cost?
It, it's totally ballpark now, but we're, we're probably going to be looking at close to 500,000. And that's sort of all in because there's going to be a lot of changes that have to be made in the interior as well in terms of like washrooms and just reconfiguring our space. So we're recognizing that it's going to be big and we're already looking at potential fundraising plan for that. It would, yeah, we, we recognize it's going to be a very big project.
And have you looked at, besides the lift, I mean, there's lots of chairs that can move upstairs. There's different options on the, on the lifting.
We have. We've worked with a company called Gun Consultants that was recommended through the parks, the public, Public Works that we work with. And so they have given us a preliminary, preliminary plan for the location. Our next step is that we need to have a design created that would encompass all the different elements. And the design phase itself is going to be fairly costly. But we've got a planning meeting with Gun Consultants scheduled for next week. And then we're hoping to have some more solid numbers that we can work with. And then, and then start looking at fundraising for initially the design aspect of it. Then once we have our design, then we'll move forward with some major grant proposals. We want to do some community fundraising too, because we like projects that involve the community. We think it's, it's good to get community buy-in for projects like that. But we recognize we'll be looking at some, looking at some big funding as well. We've already identified that there's cultural spaces, which is through the Canadian Heritage and Columbia Basin Trust. And, you know, we've, we've already sort of established a committee that will be working on the, the fundraising part of it.
Oh, it's great. Yeah, it's an important part. You play an important part to our city. So I think it's something we should pitch in for our courage and we'll do our best.
Well, I'll, I'll admit that there's a few days when I would appreciate a lift to get upstairs myself.
All right, any other comments? Say none. Thanks again, Kathy. Appreciate you being here and giving us an update on the museum. Appreciate that.
Thank you for your time.
All right, exactly. All right, council staff, we're going to move on to item nine. We want to do resort development strategies. Is that correct, Ms. Brown?
That's correct. And I'll be needed to share the screen as well. I might have to have Jamie share the screen. She set me up with it and it's vanished. Sorry, Jamie.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm, we're basically doing two presentations back to back today to give you a full overview of the impact of tourism on our community, on our revenue opportunities and on how we work with our stakeholders in the tourism sector. So as you know, Community Economic Development manages the Resort Municipality Initiative along with providing oversight to the municipal and regional district tax or MRDT program, both of which are funded by the Ministry of Tourism, but from different sources of revenue. So I'm going to just give you some highlights from the RMI program, the Resort Development Strategy. Thank you, Jamie. So we've seen this program evolve significantly over the last 15 years and step with the MRDT program. And this program is funded by gas taxes amongst other sources. The funds flow directly to the city and are administered through the Community Economic Development under the direction of the Tourism Initiatives Committee. Next slide, please. This is how the program works. Give you a second to take a look at that. And again, you're familiar with this breakdown, but I think it's important to revisit this before we talk about the MRDT growth and opportunities to, to increase to 3%. Next slide, please. So the intentions of the RMI program are to diversify our tourism infrastructure, to deliver exceptional visitor experiences and to incorporate sustainable tourism practices and products. Next one, please. Key outcomes include all of what you can see above, increased private investment, diversifying the municipal tax base, increasing our municipal tax revenue, resort activities and amenities being improved and increasing employment in the community. So our revenues have gone up pretty consistently, although you can see the dip once the pandemic hit. And that's because, again, our performance lift that we receive each year is tied to funds coming through the MRDT program that are directly tied to the number of visitors in town paying tax on their accommodation. So it's been a steady climb with over $8 million coming directly to the city since the inception of the program. Next slide, please. Okay. So 2.9 million received and allocated in the community over the last three-year strategy. 21 community organizations supported and 39 projects receiving funds from the, from this fund. So you have the budget as part of your package, which breaks down the financial plan for three years and which projects were funded directly by RMI funding. So what we've done here is just group them in the different categories. And then I'm going to go through some of the different categories and give you some highlights from some of the projects that we've worked on. I do want to say before getting into this, the first projects to start off, a lot of the projects are specifically city-owned assets or amenities. And so developing the resort development strategy obviously requires working closely with Department of Engineering and Public Works and the Department of Parks, Parks and Culture, because they will be the ones considering how to implement these projects. And actually, it'll add to their, to their workloads and to their work plans. So input from those departments is key to development of a resort development strategy as well as our tourism partners. So in the first category, we've got multi-use trails. We've got some examples here from trails we funded through the, the city again to improve the Green Belt, to fund the Cycling Association Alpine Club of Canada. the green belt to fund the Cycling Association Alpine Club of Canada. Next slide, please. Wayfinding signage, of course, is a city-owned amenity and we collaborated on this project with Tourism Revelstoke. Next slide, Williamson Lake Campground. We awarded the contract, I believe, in October of 2021. And work on that will be underway this spring. We purchased a shuttle bus, actually two used shuttle buses with the intention of looking at how we could amalgamate services with the, with BC Transit and future. So rather than investing in a large new vehicle, we've been able to invest in a couple of smaller ones that have met the demand increase and allowed us to use those vehicles on off-season times to, to rent out with some revenue that comes into the city for other groups to use these. Seasonal lighting is a recent example of things we used our downtown beautification funds for. We purchased a mobile visitor services van that is managed by Tourism Revelstoke Partnership with the Chamber. One of their key opportunities is to reach the thousands of people that flood to the top of Parks Canada every summer that don't necessarily stop in Revelstoke, often bypass the community. So this is a way that we can get up there, highlight the opportunities and the other recreation amenities in our community and get more of them to stay longer. We have undertaken, as you know, a number of upgrades to our visitor information center, the upstairs space, which will accommodate meetings with our tourism stakeholders and recreation groups, as well as new public washrooms in the downstairs and water bottle filling stations. We have been funding third-party groups as well with different recreation projects, infrastructure projects, including the Adaptive Sports Society. We've also funded jumps on new jumps for mountain bike competitors at RMR. We have supported the Climbers Access Society at Waterworld to improve their amenities. We funded software for the snowmobile club to be able to track their visitation and actually capture some of the economic data, which gives us a pretty good and eye-opening in look at how exactly snowmobiling brings a huge economic activity to Revelstoke. We built a jump at RMR and some of the other projects we've done that infrastructure-related include the Riverside Forest Walk at the Forester Museum, Trails of the Revy Riders Dirtbag Club, the Alpine Club of Canada, Trails up in Mount Begbie and camping pads and equipment and improved trail maintenance for the Nordic Ski Club. In terms of arts and culture infrastructure, Kathy actually spoke a little bit about some of the infrastructure we've supported for museum and archives, including new panels along the river as well as installations with that at the museum itself. We've supported displays at the Railway Museum, including a display that will, that showcases the Revelstoke sign that you see at the bottom, which is using exactly the same font found on the original railway sign. We've supported projects like art galleries. And on the left, I would point out the artist Rick Gendron, who's Synoics from Coldwell Confederacy, who came to Revelstoke for the first time in his life to provide an overview when this art project was shared with the public. And he had created this project based on images and photographs of his ancestors born and raised in Revelstoke. So this is quite a significant and moving project that we are happy to support. Other infrastructure projects have included a new roof on the visual arts gallery, new sound systems for it, Revelstoke, new event supports, chairs, that kind of thing for arts and culture events. And again, I've mentioned museum and archives. And then the last category, event services and programs. So we've just got an overview here of the different events we funded. Considering that we usually would have funded about probably two to three times as much funds that would have gone to events, but pandemic limited us somewhat. So this was significantly lower than we had hoped to, hope to support. Instead, we diverted funds to other recreation amenities that would get more people outdoors during the pandemic. And here's some examples of events, spaghetti event, Luna and a guerrilla gig held up at Waterworld. And lastly, services and programs. So we supported the ski shuttle over the past three years to the tune of $212,000. And we also spent $60,000 on the ambassador program, which as the pandemic took hold of our tourism sector businesses, the focus shifted from ambassador program to actually a worker retention program. So we recruited businesses to have their staff go through this program and that became a recruiting tool for them and a retention tool to try and keep more workers in the frontline service sector jobs. So going back to the actual report, I wanted to have a brief discussion with council and, and answer any questions you have. We've tried to kind of think about how the RMI program has, has evolved over the past three years, given, given many, many different changes affecting our community. And so I've tried to capture for you impacts of COVID. I've mentioned how we were able to access additional funding through other sources like the Tourism Independent Communities Grant, how we're able to leverage economic opportunity funding to support our recreation groups that are primarily located in CSRD Area B. You've had a presentation from Tourism Revelstoke and Jamie, our EDO on the Destination Management Framework that we're hoping to adopt and have it guide our tourism activities over the next, next decade. Parks McMaster Plan is, is evolving and developing in under Laurie's direction. And we've had input into that to make sure that it aligns with and actually helps us guide some of our spending, future spending plans for the resort development strategy. And we've also spoken briefly about the backcountry recreation access planning project. All of these have, you can go to the next slide. All of these have opportunities to, to build new partnerships, including working with First Nations. And we're seeing a lot of activity happening in that, in that field, as you know. We've worked with RMR, we've worked with regional partners like Crick Sets and Trails, Parks Canada. And I would say over the past three years, one of the biggest benefits of the RMI program has been in solidifying those external partnerships and understanding better how we can support each other. And that's been a huge boon through the pandemic and being able to be flexible and responsive. In terms of finances, as I mentioned, we've gotten over $8 million over the 14 years of the RMI program with almost 2.3 million in the last three years alone. By leveraging funds from COVID recovery grant funding and economic opportunity funding, we've allocated over $4 million in external funding over the past three years, all in alignment with our resort development strategy. And of that as well, 275,000 went to museums, galleries and local arts and culture groups for events and programming. Again, that would normally be two to three times higher without COVID restrictions. So at this point, we're waiting word from the Ministry of Tourism, which should be coming down with the budget in a few weeks as to what the program will look like going forward. So at this point, because we haven't received the performance lift, given the decline in visitor traffic, we are on board for, I believe it's 692,000 a year in base budget financing. But we are waiting information and update from the minister as to what that will look like going forward in the future. I would point out that the program has grown substantially over the last several years. We are able to take a $10,000 administration fee off the top of this project, but it does not clearly cover the, the growth and the, the impact on staff capacity. So we've been able to leverage other funding like economic opportunity funding to ensure that the CD base budget will grow and step with tourism programming that's being managed through this department. And we've done that without having any impact on taxation. So trying to find other ways to be creative and support our growing tourism sector and support other city departments' abilities to leverage our my funding and put it into city infrastructure. And that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
So any questions for Ms. Brown?
Thank you for that presentation. It's nice to kind of see where the RMI funding goes and how it impacts our community in a positive. Counsel Elliot has a question.
Great info. Just a couple of things. The ambassador program, what, what is that?
The ambassador program was modeled on one developed, delivered in Banff, Alberta. And I think there's one in Whistler as well. And Megan Tabor could perhaps answer more questions about that. But essentially, the idea is to work with local tourism operators and employers, train their staff, train staff, whether they're at museum and archive staff, whether they are staff at any of the other resort or tourism operations in town. We're hoping to actually expand this to city employees as well. We've had that discussion. So that everybody that encounters visitors has a same line about where they can go for services, what our history looks like, you know, what amenities they shouldn't miss. So basically allows everybody in the community to be an ambassador. What we did, given the decrease in visitation over the last couple of years, we shifted the focus somewhat to allow businesses to offer incentives to retain employees in that sector, which was so hard hit by the pandemic. So it shifted somewhat. So they're still being trained as ambassadors, but they are given benefits that allow them to, to, you know, hopefully find a reason to come and work in Revelstoke and meet our, our labor demands.
Okay. And then the, I guess the, the funds that you're generating are based on hotel visits. How does 2022 look so far?
2022 is looking good, barring the advent of any more variants. I think we heard recently from RMR that they're expecting March to be a bumper, bumper month, record-setting month. So now again, the funds aren't derived from the taxes, but they grow kind of in line with the taxes. So there's over 60 communities that receive MRD or the, the tax accommodators and only 14 communities of which are RMI-funded communities. And so our performance lifts every year are tied directly to the performance as measured by MRDT funds, but it's quite a different source. So just to try to make sure that people understand the difference between them, that the RMI funds are for infrastructure and events and the MRDT funds are for destination marketing management.
Yeah. So, so the, the 2021 year was a horrific downturn in our, in visitation and the revenues proportionally didn't come back.
Well, we still, we still received for, for the, the base budget amount, which is 692,000. So the performance lift, which can be up to another 150,000 per year, is directly tied to the performance as measured by MRDT. But the base amount comes to the community regardless of visitor traffic.
So, so that extra amount, if we have a good year in terms of visitation, then we'll get a bigger proportion of the year following.
Yes. If, if that, you know, that's the plan going forward. We're not quite sure what the model looks like going forward. It has changed in the past.
Yeah. Okay.
Counsel Ryan, do you have a question?
Yeah. So next steps for increasing it to 3%, since you're the signatory of that contract, is there anything? Like, what's the timeline on that?
That is the topic of the next presentation.
Okay.
Counsel, I have another question.
So one of the things that was in my ears, we were looking at a booking platform a software program to take the booking, hotel bookings. Is that in, in the queue for funding? One of the
I believe that, that RAW Tourism Revelstoke is looking at a platform like that. That would be again, an MRDT-funded program.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, counselors, for Ms. Brown? Thank you, Ms. Brown. Appreciate it. Let's move on to the next presentation.
So I'm just going to introduce our presenters to you. Jamie Mays, our Economic Development Officer, who works really closely with Meg, our executive director of Tourism Revelstoke, and they've been working on this information. And they also work together to prepare our tactical plans, our financial and activity reports to the ministry on behalf of the city and Tourism Revelstoke. So they will take it away.
Good afternoon, everyone. Meg and I are really looking forward to speaking to you all today about an opportunity we have with our municipal and regional district tax. So our department works closely with Tourism Revelstoke on both the MRDT and the RMI programs. And so this presentation will be focusing on the MRDT. And this is a tax that visitors pay on accommodation. Currently, they pay an additional 2% on their stays and the tax is remitted to the province and then that funnels back to Revelstoke. And a five-year destination strategy guides how this funding is spent. Tourism Revelstoke is contracted by the city of Revelstoke to be the destination management organization that creates and implements our destination management strategy. So just to give a quick background on where we're at, our current five-year destination strategy ends in April of 2023. So 2022 will be the last full year of the current five-year strategy. Annual tactical plans are due to the province each year at the end of November. And the purpose of this presentation is to explore moving from a 2% MRDT to a 3% MRDT. And our next five-year destination strategy and MRDT application are due by August 30th of this year. So this slide shows how we all interact in the bigger picture. The Revelstoke Accommodation Association, also known as Tourism Revelstoke, is the contracted destination marketing organization that manages the implementation of the MRDT program. The Chamber of Commerce is a partner organization and they run the Visitor Experiences and Visitor Services Department. And the city of Revelstoke is the designated recipient of the MRDT funds. And these funds are then flowed through directly to RAW and Tourism Revelstoke to implement the programs as approved by the five-year strategy. The MRDT program's intentions and principles are outlined on this slide, which are set out by the province of BC. In short, the MRDT can be used for tourism marketing programs and projects, and it must be supported by local government and tourism stakeholders. So tourism economically is a top industry for Revelstoke. And you can see on this slide, it shows an overview of MRDT revenues since our program's inception. It follows the same pattern as the RMI. As you can see, drastic declines in 2020 and 2021. So the 2020 MRDT revenues dropped by approximately 29%, which is a loss of over $200,000 in revenue. And 2021 is tracking 5% down from the already decimated 2020 MRDT revenues. So we're still waiting on December revenues to round out our 2021 so that we know exactly how much we got in 2021. From a provincial standpoint, we're really heavy hitting destination. So we rank first in the Cooney Rockies region and 10th overall in British Columbia. We've recently completed a value of tourism study in partnership with Destination BC. And we've listed a few key findings on this slide. And bear in mind, this is from 2019, so when tourism was really at its peak. We saw $147 million in annual visitor spending by over 760,000 visitors. Average spend was $277 per overnight visitor to Revelstoke. The majority of our overnight visitors do stay in those fixed group accommodations. And approximately 240 businesses in Revelstoke are directly or closely associated with the tourism industry. The value of tourism in Revelstoke goes way beyond the simple economic impact. In an average year, Tourism Revelstoke invests over $150,000 back into the community through supporting events and our local nonprofit organizations. To a large degree, our visitors are the ones that are paying for the great amenities, trails and events that our residents have come to know and love. So the four buckets on this slide outline eligible uses of the MRDT. Our primary focus has traditionally been a marketing approach. In the next five years, we're committed to adjusting resource allocations to balance destination management initiatives with our marketing. This comes directly from our tourism industry stakeholder feedback as a top priority to move towards a more holistic picture of tourism that goes beyond just the marketing piece. We will take a lead role in the management and development of tourism in our destination. So you may remember from our Destination Management Framework presentation, these four pillars. And destination management does involve these four areas, which does include marketing, but also insights, destination development and sustainability. We're in the process of securing funding for a full-fledged destination management plan, which is intended to be a guiding document that supports the community's tourism vision, identifies destination management roles, supports broader community values for quality of life, and really considers both destination stewardship and economic prosperity. So Tourism Revelstoke in its current iteration is governed by the Revelstoke Accommodation Association with input from the Revelstoke Tourism Advisory Committee. The board is made up of seven accommodators who represent 25 traditional accommodation offerings. We work and engage very closely with our local nonprofit groups and Tourism Chamber members to guide our strategy. The Revelstoke Accommodation Association Board of Directors recently went through a board governance review with the Whistler Center for Sustainability to determine industry best practices. The board has now indicated a desire to pursue a more diverse model reflected on this slide. We have also engaged the Whistler Center for Sustainability to facilitate a workshop to help guide the direction for the next five years. Invites have gone out to representatives from various tourism sectors, including an invite to Counselor Palmer, who has already confirmed his attendance. By early April, we'll have a summary document and presentation ready for council on the areas of strategic focus for the next five years. So MRDT really provides a foundation for the funding streams that flow through the provincial government and to our community as a result of tourism. And specifically, this comes in the form of overnight stays. So the box at the bottom left of this slide outlines how the additional 1% MRDT can be allocated. It's important to note of the additional 1%, 0.2% goes to the Destination BC Events Fund. This is a mandatory piece when moving to the 3% MRDT and is taken directly from the province. This is a larger provincial pool of funding that any community collecting MRDT can apply to. So we can still access this pot of funding through one-off funding applications like Luna. And when moving to 3%, our OAP will naturally be boosted through the increased percentage. Online accommodators will now have to collect 3%, which which will go directly to the city for affordable housing initiatives. With the remaining 0.8%, the proposed use would be to support our destination management initiatives as outlined in the destination management framework presentation that was brought to council on November 13th last year. As the scope of work evolves beyond destination marketing and into destination management, there will be an increase in operational capacity, expertise, and resources required to support the new focus areas of destination insights, sustainability, and development. Increasing the MRDT to 3% will allow us, as a community, to allocate the additional 0.8% to support these initiatives long-term. We estimate, based on 2019 revenues, that the additional 0.8% would generate approximately $200,000 a year, and that could be put towards implementing the destination management plan. The net benefit of taking this approach aims to improve our residents' quality of life while balancing the evolution of our tourism sector. There is a fairly quick timeline to apply for a rate increase as presented on the screen here. The entire MRDT application package must be submitted to the provincial government by August of this year. We're presenting to you today with the intention to open a discussion and garner council's support in our proposed approach and rationale to move from 2% to 3% MRDT collection with the goal of utilizing this, again, for the destination management initiatives. From here, we also need to work with our tourism industry to get guidance on the five-year strategic business plan that will be developed as required by the MRDT renewal. And we envision much of this strategic plan to align with the destination management framework, bridging destination marketing and management. The formal application requirements are shared with you here on the screen, and we'll be engaging with you as a council through this process. The items highlighted in yellow are where city council plays a part. And currently, each tourism-related funding stream, the MRDT and RMI, they require their own strategy, their own budgets, their own reporting processes and timelines. And these processes and timelines don't necessarily line up, but we do our best to ensure the plans talk to each other when and where it makes sense to ensure that we're leveraging funds as best we can to move in a cohesive direction for our community and the industry. Our vision is to one day have the destination management plan be the guiding document that encompasses the MRDT five-year strategy and the RMI resort development strategy. Again, the purpose of presenting to you today is to open this as a discussion, hopefully get your support as our proposed approach and rationale for moving from 2% MRDT to 3% MRDT collection with the goal of that being utilized for our destination management initiatives. So we know there's a lot of information and moving parts to this discussion, and we really appreciate your time and your support as we move forward using tourism as a force for good. Thank you, and Ingrid, feel free to jump in here.
Thank you, Jamie and Megan. I really want to thank the team. We have a phenomenal team, and now we have our new digs here at the Business and Visitor Information Centre to house all of us, you know, bringing in new partners like Dale Tomer-Fritz since our Indigenous Relations Manager, working with First Nations. All of these things are increasing opportunities to do some really, really interesting innovative things over the next few years. So there's a really good momentum right now. And I think it's time to have this conversation about increasing to 3%. So this is what's the direction we're hoping to go in, and we welcome any questions or feedback council has.
Thanks, buddies. Appreciate it. Councillor Ryan is jonesing to discuss. She's been wanting 3% for a while, so I'll let her start.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think that my first memory, like, when we first got elected, that this was the first thing I was like, oh, that might be an interesting one. And I remember being in Alan Shibo's office. And so it's great to see. I know there are some other dynamics at play, and like you mentioned, maybe not the time for that conversation at that time. But really glad to see that this is coming forward and very supportive of this.
Any other comments from council? Councillor Elliot?
Yeah, I agree. I think it was Jackie who promoted, he had to hear less of why, why isn't the, why weren't we charging 3%? Or why weren't the hotels... Maybe that's my question, is what was the resistance in the past? Was there, was there some sticking point at 2% as opposed to 3%?
There was a couple of factors in the mix. I think the recognition of a housing crisis, of course, you know, was huge. But I think when there was initial conversations with RAW, and this is going back two to three years, their biggest concern at the time was, was having some better policies around short-term vacation rentals. And that conversation is very much tied up in expectations around how we could better manage that. Now that we've making some progress on that file, I think there's a much better opportunity to collaborate.
I can also chime in a little bit there. So the movement from a 2% to a 3% requires a full application package, and that is a lot of work, as you can see on the screen. It takes a long time to put together. So by the time we got to the point where we were starting to discuss the 3% and really, you know, put some ideas on the table, we decided it would make sense to wait until our next renewal was due anyways, rather than having to resubmit a package halfway through our first or the past MRDT renewal every five years.
Great.
Sorry, you have another question?
Yeah, and what's the feeling? I mean, are the hotels embracing this, or is everyone pro? Or is there some, is there a mix on the approach to it?
So we're in, obviously, like, very early stages of engaging the hotel sector. Right now, the Executive Board of Directors has had a majority of wanting to pursue the 3%. So that's kind of was our impetus to come and chat with you today, because obviously council has a big role in this as well. So we have had the Board of Directors say that they would like to move towards a 3%. But you're right, like, we do still have to get our entire, we need 51% of 51% of the rooms. So 51% of the hotels with 51% of the rooms need to be in favor of this. So there's a chance that we go through kind of the motions, and then at the end of it, the hotels don't sign on. But the Board of Directors are definitely the most engaged of the hotel sector. And I believe that if they're on board and they're helping us through the process, that the hotel sector will also get that 51%.
And just back to the timeline for a moment. So this has been discussed with the Board of Directors. In May, you'll be working with your executor, the larger membership, to collect their signatures once we, you know, understand we have council support. Comes back to council in June, I believe, for final approval. And there are some bylaws that need to be adapted at the time. And then we submit the application in August with the full support of council and 51% of accommodators.
Hey, great. I'll go to councillor Palmer, then councillor Shalit.
Thank you, Mayor Souls. And thank you, everyone, for the staff, and Megan, for your good work on this. I'm excited about the enhancements to how we're serving the community. But definitely, I think as a representative on RAW, I'm sensing the support because I see the net benefit for that as we're creating better facilities and better management, improving the experience within Rebelstoke that I think the sense I have, they're excited. There's always going to be a little bit of difference of opinion on where the emphasis should be, but this is, I think, is being seen as a great opportunity. It's a benefit to the economic sector in Rebelstoke because as we're bringing more visitors and having that experience here. So I think that's great. And for the community, rather than using other resources from the community, this is money coming into our community from people that are sharing the wonderful place that we have in Rebelstoke. Some of the history of the 2% to 3%, and I'm going by memory, so I might not have it entirely accurate, but I think in the early days of the MRDT, the 2% was the only option, and there was resistance from having any kind of taxation because there was a sense, okay, well, now we're just going to increase, you know, the cost to the visitor experience. But as communities found that there was a net benefit coming back, they're just lobbying, I think, to increase to 3%. And I think over time, we've seen that shift. And that's why this list on the, you have, there's many more communities in the 3% category, and notably any tourism places that I think were probably one of the last sort of distinct tourism places to move to the 3%. So, yeah, so thank you very much for the work on that, and I look forward to more detailed conversation as we go ahead. As Megan mentioned, there is a strategic planning session on March 16th for Accommodation Association, which is an all-day event, and I plan on attending that. If there's anyone from council or if it has any questions or wants some input, let me know.
Awesome, thanks. Thank you, councillor. Councillor Shalit?
Thanks, your worship. And thank you very much for the presentation. It's always nice to check in and hear how things are progressing and the long list of projects you guys have on the go. I'm really looking forward to seeing what comes out of both the strategic planning session and the further engagements that you guys do. I think that we've long been talking about how we need to manage Rebelstoke as a destination more sustainably and having a clear vision that aligns with all of this work that you guys do, I think is going to make that a lot more effective and a place for that work to come together to a certain extent. I think we see a lot of confusion and discussion around what does it look like for us to be a sustainable, viable community that is a tourist destination, especially through the pandemic, through all the changes that have been going on lately, with this little anxiety that everyone's feeling. I think if we have a very clear vision of what tourism looks like and how that is going to be regenerative for our community, I think that'll help get that buy-in from the community and start bringing us all together again.
That's awesome. Thank you for that. Councillor Elliot, you have another comment?
Yes, just generally, what's your take on the feeling, the atmosphere in the hotel sector? Are they positive on the summer and the fall?
Yeah, we haven't discussed the fall too much, but if the summer's going to be anything like February, there's a lot of positivity in the air. I know Rebelstoke Mountain Resort has some cool things planned as well. They've invested a lot of money in infrastructure coming down the pipe, so I think we're anticipating a summer that will be similar to 2019.
Yeah, I think the optimism is starting to escalate generally. I think it's great. And, you know, it's been two years of struggle for many of the hotels and the restaurants and all the businesses that are related to tourism. So I'm glad that's happening.
So I'm going to deviate from policy here right now because we have a hotel year in our midst. And so Mr. Jenkins is here from Explorer Society Hotel. I'm going to ask him that same question. How do you feel with the hotel years in your midst, Stephen, regarding optimism for the future?
Thanks. And that is, that's a surprise. I wasn't expecting the same because our team is such a good job-saver for us. We will be constrained on labor more than on people wanting to spend money. We'll have people lined up to spend money. Our ability to serve them is still in under question. Look at any business you guys frequent, and you probably go, yep, not quite sure they're going to be open that night, not quite sure I can work with them, et cetera. That's the larger problem, is that post-pandemic, people aren't coming back to hospitality. And in some cases, and this is why we're so active on the housing front, we can't land them here because we can't put them somewhere. So I would tell you bullish on the business prospect, bullish on our ability to say a Canadian gets to choose where they spend their tourism dollar, and many times they want to come to Rebelstoke because of the problem you and those places live. And we just have to be able to retain our kids, house our kids, and service our guests. Because there is a knife that, John, is when all of a sudden a visitor comes and they can't get service, and then it works as an investment maybe later. Happy to concentrate any more if you guys want, and I, Mr. Per, I can stick around.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Stephen. I know I'm deviating from what normal protocol is, but having that input, and I know you work with these ladies on that group, and just hearing from you is important to us. Any other questions from council?
Sorry.
Rob, you're on a roll.
No, no, I just, I asked about the booking platform or a process to streamline the engagement with people interested in Rebelstoke and want to book and they want to make it simple, one-stop shop. Is that still in the queue? Or is that, when I was there, it was RMI funding, but now it's tourism. So I'm not sure which ballpark it's in.
Thanks, Rob. I don't remember it ever being in the RMI bucket.
Just a talk. I find funny. It was a significant bunch of money at the time. It was a major expenditure, so they were trying to find a way to finance it.
I gotcha. Yes, I would say at the moment, we don't have any irons in the fire with regarding a one-stop-shop booking engine. We do have a referral engine that we use right now. We're finding value in that because we're actually allowing our visitors to get referred directly to our partners rather than them going through like an online booking agency, which potentially takes up to 30% commission. We don't have capacity in-house right now to run something like that, so we would also need to take a little bit of commission from the businesses as well. So right now, our avenue is really just to try to push the visitor directly to the experience or the accommodation, so that they're going to book direct with that provider. But we do have kind of an engine that houses all of the activities and the accommodations, so it allows the visitor to see how much there really is to do here and extend their stay. And, yeah.
I know, I know, sorry.
Councillor Elliot, I have a question regarding the booking platform. What is the, what's the overall ability using a platform for the group versus using their own through their own hotels, that sort of thing? Is there...
Yeah, so basically, like Whistler or Kelowna or City of Vancouver, you log in and you have an assortment. It's like Expedia.
Okay.
The same idea. All of a sudden, you can get in one source. And don't go to Expedia, get your best, best, you have your assortment of lists, hotels or accommodations out there, or events you want to pursue or activities are all in one place. And you just go click, click, I booked mine. Yeah, so there is a fee, but that's the reason why both, you know, some communities do it in-house.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you for that, because I wasn't aware of how that works. So that's important. Councillor Shalit?
And just to share a little bit on that, too, and maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but I do remember having a conversation, looking into that, when the referral engine was built or fleshed out, because that was when I was on chamber still. And one of the concerns, one of the things that made Rebelstoke different than a lot of those other communities was just the way our accommodations are laid out, that we're not as central. It's, there's a lot more diversity in our accommodation providers that because some of them already had online booking engines and others didn't, it wasn't a level being able to support in the same sense. And then, yeah, having to take a cut or a commission to be able to pay the bills on it. It ends up being as expensive as juggling those at once, so.
Okay. Now I cut you off, councillor. You had a question?
Good, I'm good.
Councillor Palmer, you have anything else?
Yeah, just on that, you know, the Accommodation Association, they've got hotelers, accommodation people that are really experts, and certainly they'll be driving something that's important to them. I won't sort of weigh in my own opinions on that as well, but I know that they'll push for what's going to be best for Rebelstoke in their industry.
Thank you for that. Any other comments from council? St. Dunn, thank you, ladies. I appreciate you being here and giving us the benefit of your presentation. Definitely, you stirred something up in us to want to do better for the community when we come to this sector. So thanks for what you're doing, and appreciate again all your time and your hard work. Thank you. All right, council, we're going to move on to communications. We have the RCMP 2021 second and third quarterly reports. Any comments or questions regarding the reports? Mr. Zachary, you seem to be adjusting things. Are you going to make comment on that, or you're going to give us the report?
I have no further comment.
Okay, great. I'm not seeing anything from staff. I appreciate what we've got in front of us. Then I'm going to move on to Mark's Recreation and Culture, the fourth quarter report. And any comments or questions on that for Mr. Nettow? Or do you want to do a presentation, Mr. Nettow?
Thank you, your worship. No presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if council has any of them.
Any questions, councillors?
Well, I will. Councillor? So I'm just curious, what's your, how busy is it for you at the pool? Is it growing in the last one? Participants, visitors?
Your worship, we are hitting capacity for all our public swims right now, and that is potentially due to the reduced operating hours. Right now, we're only open from noon to eight, and our public swims are limited to 80 patrons. So we're consistently hitting between 65 and 80. Evenings are definitely... Evenings are definitely 80. The afternoon swims range about 65 to 80, which is pretty good. We're we're still about a 50% drop from pre-COVID times, but we're getting back up there.
And and it's exciting, actually, that that your capacity with the limits that we're at, Mr. Natto. I'm appreciative of that. I'm hoping that we're all anticipating provincial health officers going to open the doors to less restrictions come February 21st. And then and then we'll see how things go. And that's, I think we're kind of weighed with beta breath, all of us in communities. So Counselor Sherlock?
I'm just curious if we have how the staffing levels are doing.
Mr. Natto, staffing?
Limitation, council?
Yes, through your worship. So the capacity restrictions right now are not due to COVID. It is due to staffing levels. I don't have an adequate staffing complement to open more than the eight hours a day. So most likely, if restrictions do relax in the next week, that won't necessarily impact our capacity levels at the rec center. So right now, I have a couple of irons in the fire with returning university students. So come end of April, we will be in a better position for sure. I've got staffing lined up for then. But in the meantime, I have since had two casuals resign. One is going, one just can't afford to live here. The cost of living and the housing is an issue. And the other one was only here for a short time to begin with. So they both given their notice. So I will be once again back to shorter staffing levels here in the next few weeks. So it's definitely challenging and it's it's across the province. It's not specific to Revelstoke. It is definitely a thing across the province.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Natto. If any of you have lifeguard skills, right? Scuba dive, which means that if they're under the water, it's a good thing. Probably not a good thing for our pool. Counselor Palmer?
Thank you, Mayor Souls. And thank you, Lori, for being very nimble through the COVID times. Been stressful for the whole world, but you've managed it very well. I think as the world opens up, there's going to be a whole bunch of Aussies that have lifeguarding certification that are going to be moving in droves here and watching grizzly games and then be at the pool there lifeguarding if they can get their working visas. The one question, you don't need to answer it because a little bit of surprise. I've had a few people in the community ask about the the staff entrance. And I know the protocol was there, but just wondering if that need is still exists today. I noted each time I go in there, but there has been some people in the community thinking that really, there's no real danger coming from the other side parking lot. So just something to consider.
Thanks, Laura. Counselor Elliott?
Okay, Lori, the golf course, it wasn't in the report. But I, how was that? How was their year last year? And are they expecting a better season coming up?
Their year last year was pretty good. They did submit their financials, and I think they were their anticipated profit was above what they expected. So things are looking really good for them. I haven't had an opportunity to talk strategy for the upcoming season. We haven't had our meeting yet. So once I touch base with them on that, I'll have a better better idea. But yeah, things are looking good. It was a good year for golf. COVID really helped out the golf course, that's for sure. I think a lot of people got out there. It was a safe activity to do during COVID.
They have open tee times this coming week, if you may.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that because I think that was a positive that came out of last summer.
Yeah. Any other comments from Mr. Natto? Thank you, Mr. Natto. Appreciate your report and all the work you do for us, Parks, Rec and Culture. All right, we're moving on to item 12C, Fire Department Fourth Quarterly Report. Chief DeRosa is here. And do you want to, Stephen, do you want to make any comments on your report? Or just get some questions? What's best for you?
I'll do a little of both, your worship. Just wanted to highlight the fourth quarter reports. The numbers showing a little bit of an increase in fires through the fourth quarter as well as alarms, motor vehicle incidents and that. So our numbers are up from the previous quarters. So that does indicate a little bit of a change in the traveling public for the highway accidents and that, and people coming to Revelstoke. The numbers are still down from the 2020 full year. And so that's just another indicator that, you know, we're seeing some dynamic changes throughout the community, most likely due to the pandemic and the changing restrictions on that. So it has caused us a little bit. Fire and life safety inspections has remained steady. So roughly one a day, if you look at the numbers, should be seeing a total number of 360 plus in your final report that's coming up, I believe, next month. And just to highlight our training, some of the stuff that firefighters have been working on, auto extrication, avalanche awareness, those are reasonably seasonable for the winter season. Of course, the highway is a little bit more challenging, and recruits have been working towards their professional qualifications for the NFPA 1001 standards. And just trying to do our best so we can in the community with fire prevention education. Firefighters have done several child passenger safety educator events with with the public. That's where the the parents will come in and they'll have their child passenger seat checked and given some information and safety tips on how to make sure that their child is protected. And with that, I will take any questions that council may have.
Any questions, councilors? Counselor Palmer?
Thank you, Mayor Souls. Thank you, Steve, for, again, for you and your team and the good work the professionals and the volunteers are doing. Very appreciated. I I've noticed on social media, maybe the increased activity, maybe it's because I'm on there a little bit more. But I, there seems to be more, you know, these sort of spontaneous posts on when you're going out and doing things. And I certainly appreciate it because it reminds me the stuff that you're doing. And I think the community appreciates it. I I think it's awesome educational component, you see, because you're going out for a motor vehicle accident. And, you know, I I think there is a contagion that just happens, saying, hey, you know, when you're going out, drive a bit slower if you're off to a fires. You know, there was one chimney fire there, I think, and saying, oh, it's time to clean my chimney. I think so. I think those social media posts are are really, really valuable. So thank you for doing it. It's a little bit more, I guess, less less officious kind of a process. And I think it really resonates with the community.
I appreciate the feedback.
That is Instagram or Facebook or?
Facebook.
Facebook or TikTok?
So Chief DeRosa, just one question. It actually came up here to my own business and sort of thinking about our rescue crews when they go out on the highway. And they're going into areas that can't always be reached by a cell phone, that sort of thing. Do we have transceivers? Should they encounter an avalanche while they're out working for our volunteers?
Absolutely. One of the protocols for the the rescue truck, when it, when the crew is assembling at the hall, is the first thing that they do is they put on their transceivers under their turnout gear. And it's turned on before they even leave the hall. So it's definitely. And then with the avalanche awareness, that's a big part of what they're actually doing is is relearning and practicing how to use the the beacons. And we've worked with both Ministry of Transport Parks Canada to identify those avalanche risk zones and where they can stage when they're when they're up there. And for example, there's red and green reflective tape on the on the signposts. And so green is a safe zone for avalanche and red is an unsafe zone for avalanche. So there's things like that. Where do we look after their safety? Make sure that they're they're safe as possible when they're up there. And there's always, always a lookout that's stationed a little bit away from the the actual scene. And so that there's always going to be at least one person that is not impacted by that potential avalanche who can make those calls.
Yeah, chief, I appreciate appreciate that information and that that can go out to the public so that they know that everyone's safe. In my professional career, it's been the it's been Revelstoke Fire Rescue that's kept me safe out at these incidents. And I just appreciate all that you and your colleagues do. But I just wanted the community to know that that they're taken care of, that they're safe. So thank you for that. But appreciate it. Any other comments from council? Saying none, thank you, Stephen. I appreciate your reports and all, again, all that you and your career do for the community.
You're welcome.
I'm going to move on now, and I'm actually going to ask for a motion to go in camera so that we resolve to in camera and as in section 90.1E of the community charter. Counselor Ryan, second by Counselor.